So, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss the employment history of an individual and lease of real property.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you Fran. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. So with that...
We're back.
I'd like to make a motion to come out of executive session. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Excellent. So, Dave has appointed Laura Bozey to the zoning board of appeals replacing Grace Loeb. The next topic on the agenda is line proposal for the highway department lighting. Apparently, Bugsy, you've told Dave that the lighting there is fine, there's not a problem.
What's that?
Apparently, you've told Dave that there's not a problem with the lighting at the highway garage is acceptable as it is now?
I said it was acceptable.
Yes, that's what he related to me. Maybe a while ago.
It's the opposite of that.
Maybe a while ago, it was acceptable.
So...
No, there's twelve lights there. Five of them work fully, two of them work partially, and five don't work.
I know, I know.
I don't think I relayed that the lighting is acceptable.
Okay. So, we have a resolution on the table to go with the line proposal, which is under five thousand dollars, up a one-shot cost. And a large portion of that is for the lift to get at all twelve lights. But Dave's, what Dave has heard from you is that everything's fine, and what is heard from me is it's not. So, can I ask that you come back next Tuesday and have that discussion? So, can I ask that you...
I think I might understand what's going on. If all the lights that were in the highway garage worked, they would be fine. They would have enough light. But you only have five working lights, correct?
Correct.
But if all twelve were working, you're fine. So, the actual fixtures, if they worked, would be terrific. You wouldn't need more. But the ones that are there need to work.
I think what, and also what he's quoting from what I'm getting is, at one point, you said you hardly use them. You had skylights. And so you don't use them a lot because you always got the skylight.
During the warmer months, we open the doors. It's easier to see. When you're working under a truck, it doesn't matter what lights you have in there. You always have to use like a drop light or a work light or something like that. But like I said, for the most part, warmer months, we can open the doors and let the natural light in.
But with the winter time and with the repairs to the roof, you will not have the natural light coming through, and you're still hampered by the fact that a number of the lights aren't working. And by the way, the fact that they're not working, what that means is they don't produce any light. They're still pulling juice.
Correct.
So, we're paying for juice for twelve lights, and you've got between five and seven that are operable.
Correct.
Yeah.
Is it a two-switch situation, when you throw the switch, all twelve go on, you can't, can you separate it?
No.
There's four switches.
Oh, there are different, okay. So you can use...
Yes. There's three lights per row, four rows. Each switch operates a row.
Okay. So you can use every other row or something?
When we go out on the streets and stuff like that, the lights are shut off. I am on them guys as bad as I am on my kids. Eight lights being left on.
If I remember correctly, it says southern lights that are less operable than the northern lights. Look the way I look. Yeah, the ones closer to Riverview
Yes.
are the ones that are not working.
Each one has at least one light out.
Yeah, okay. Could you attempt to talk with Dave at some point this week and explain the situation to him? I don't know whether or not replacing the bulbs in the five or seven, I don't know, working will make them work. And I don't know, if you could replace the bulbs, I don't know how you'd get up there to do that. You'd have to bring in Pedalo and a bucket truck. Now, I don't know if his bucket truck is tall enough for them.
We've done it in the past using the backhoe.
I don't want to hear about it.
That was the past.
You could reach them with the backhoe?
What's that?
You could reach them with the backhoe?
It's, yeah, it's kind of hairy, but yeah, you can do it.
So you have a backhoe and a ten-foot ladder in the bucket, and you, okay. I don't want to hear about it.
So the line proposal is changing the whole unit, right?
Yes, yes. Changing them. They're currently incandescent or fluorescent, and they're changing them all to LEDs there. They're putting in new lights for the exit signs. Everything's going to be converted to LED. The big, the big cost is the bay, the bay lights.
Still under five thousand dollars, which isn't...
It's still under five thousand dollars, yeah. So if you would talk to Dave.
I'll talk to Dave, yes.
And try to get that resolved. Sorry to call you down here tonight. The line proposal is still on the table.
What's that?
The line proposal is still on the table.
Okay.
So, we may be good to go on that.
Yeah, no, I'll talk to Dave tomorrow.
Okay, that'd be great. If he's, if he's well here.
I'll find him.
Okay, thanks Bugsy.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I'll tell you about it. Okay, the next topic on the agenda is the discussion with the recreation commission relative to maintenance. Can someone describe what is, what that means? With everything, can you come up?
Sure. We found the brain, I guess. So you may remember that we did a recreation walkthrough. We did a walkthrough of all the sites. And happy report that the electrical work at the bandstand in Mayor's Park has been completed. So that makes us very happy because that was a priority for us. We still have to send them up to McConville Park. We want them to look at the nine eleven electrical stuff that surrounds the nine eleven monument. But one of the things that's come up, because now we are in our second, just finished our second year of our seasonal employer agreement, and we thought it would be a good time to review that, clarify some of the things who's responsible, you know, for what. Are there other things we can do to improve the look of the recreational facilities? I know Bugsy and I have met to go over some of the things that need to be done, what can be done, how can things...
So there are two topics. One is the contract.
Well, kind of, it falls in together because the seasonal labor agreement job description, even though the funding comes from, a lot of it comes from the recreation budget, and some of it comes from, it's back and forth between the highway department. And now with so many things happening as far as needing people to cover weekends when we have some of these large events, you know. What's, and even tonight, we discussed, you know, trash removal at Mayor's Park, at the pavilion. The dumpster was no longer there. I do know a thing about the dumpster not being at Mayor's Park.
The dumpster's there as far as I know.
Does someone...
I didn't see it. I'll check.
We have to check it. Sometimes it's...
Where does it go? Does it get moved somewhere? Is it always there?
As of a few days ago, it was there. When we were down trying to winterize the bathrooms.
Okay. So, I think if it was there, if he saw it, I think. Can I just ask a clarifying question? Did you move some things out of the utility closet onto the pavilion and then back in?
Bruce was doing that, yes.
The panels?
I believe that's some of the stuff he moved, yes.
Okay, so that's what we thought. Some people saw it out, but I assumed it moved out and then blew back in. So, I need my other committee members to speak up because some of them had strong viewpoints about some of the pieces of it. Seasonal labor is responsible for, but not limited to the maintenance of the... Do you want a copy of the...
I have some extra.
Hmm?
Go ahead.
Okay. Riverfront, Dockside Park, Mayor's Park, McConville, and Tots Park. So one of the questions came about Dockside Park because we're not responsible for Dockside Park, but we're making the assumption that when the seasonal employee might be taking care of Dockside Park, that that would go, come out of a different budget. But funding for those hours don't come out of our budget?
Yeah, that's a Michelle question, I guess. I'm not sure how the budgeting is done.
Correct, that was one of the questions on there. Someone's, I have... Is, does one of you want it? Here's a copy of it. So if that might help, if someone was going to take notes to ask Michelle questions about it. Responsible is included, limited to lawn mowing, weed whacking, hedge trimming, mire tree trimming, bench repairs, maintenance of pavilion, maintenance of Mayor's Park bathrooms, stocking things there, changing light bulbs and minor repairs. Bathrooms will be open and closed for events and cleaned by... It says bathrooms will be open and closed for events and cleaned by others.
What are you reading from?
I'm reading from the agreement.
The agreement?
The seasonal agreement. We have like a seasonal employee, so...
How old is this, and when was this?
It's still got Greg Phillips on it.
Yeah. This is August of 2018.
Right. So, I don't know, is it getting ready to do the new one for the next seasonal time? We're not sure about what that meant, the bathrooms will be open and closed for events and cleaned by others.
So, Ruth Ann, the first question is, who pays for the lawn at Dockside Park, was I correct?
Who's budget does that come out of? We believe that when the person who also does the rec stuff goes down and does Riverfront, they probably just go right over to Dockside and do Dockside at the same, around the same time?
Who, rec department or highway department?
Either one, both ways.
Bruce is usually the one who cuts Dockside.
Dockside.
Bruce's timesheet has a number of columns on it that identifies where he's working.
Yeah.
So, I can't remember what the columns are, but it should be fairly straightforward to find out whether or not he allocates a specific amount of time to Dockside, and then who covers it. So that's number one. What is number two?
Well, it says, the one one, bathrooms will be opened and closed for events and cleaned by others. That makes it sound like the seasonal employee does not clean the bathrooms.
But I believe he does. Does Bruce clean the bathrooms in Mayor's Park?
Yeah.
So, yeah, so I don't know what the wording was meant for. I mean, at that, at the time they wrote it, I'm sure they knew what they wrote, you know, what they were thinking about. But at this point, he does clean. He cleans the bathrooms at Mayor's Park. He opens them for an event. You know, he closes them unless, do your guys clean them? Do your guys...
We do not clean the bathrooms at Mayor's Park.
Right. So, so you can see...
Who opens and closes?
For an event, I believe it's Bruce. I notified Bruce, what was the last event we had there? I guess the senior pick. And when the tents were coming in over there, I notified Bruce, and he was supposed to be there to open it, get the tents delivered, you know, or you opened it. But he knew about getting the bathrooms ready for that event, so...
So you can see where it could be misunderstood as far as the seasonal employee's supposed to clean the bathroom, but this says it's going to be cleaned by somebody else. Because it says priority must be given to lawn mowing, weed whacking, the aforementioned parks, so...
I mean, there hasn't been a problem with it. It's just the wording on the contract, right?
Right, you know, so, and reviewing this and thinking about, you know, we've had this for two years, this more formalized approach to the seasonal employee. You know, we just thought there was time to go over and see it, you know, is this enough? You know, I know that the highway department does an awful lot, you know, of things in the various places, fixing benches, you know, repairing.
Okay, let's, so, is there a problem with the statement priority must be given to lawn mowing and weed whacking the aforementioned parks?
No, because that's really, that's the condition, I mean...
So... Bugsy, do you, do you direct the seasonal laborer? It says that you sign...
We talk. I don't tell him what to do. I don't look out for what he does.
It says that you sign his timesheet.
No, they asked me to do that, and I flat out said I can't keep track of what he's doing. Most of his work is after hours or on weekends.
Okay, so timesheet should not go to Bugsy. Okay, and... Okay, probably shouldn't be in here either. And who directs the seasonal laborer?
Is it, I mean, from what I understand, and this is always an issue with the seasonal laborer, whether it's Bruce or anybody else, it's sort of, nobody really directs them. But, you know, I don't see that there's been any problems. I mean, things have been done. The box have been cut and weed whacked and everything else. So is there, is there a specific problem other than the, you know, other than the fact that we need to clear our contract?
Well, I think when we review this and we look at it, we always have questions, but a lot of other members of the committee will fill.
I think there was a large problem this past spring with things not getting done because we were doing other projects. I don't know what the other projects were, but the top park, it's right up the street from your house, it was a disgrace. I photographed to prove it. I mean, things were not getting done because he was widespread. There was nobody overseeing him, and it wasn't getting done.
But there's, I mean, you just identified two problems, Jeff. One, you said he was widespread, which I...
Widespread, meaning he had too many, he may have had too many things to do.
Too many things to do.
When a seasonal laborer has very few things on his plate, weed whacking, cutting grass, hedges, it's pretty much it. It's not fixing the pavilion and stuff like that. I don't think that should be in his...
Was he fixing?
I'm just saying, that was just mentioned.
It says...
I think he should be doing what...
Sorry, it says here, maintenance of the pavilion and maintenance of the restrooms, including minor repairs. That's what it says in the contract. So, you said that he had too much to do, and then you said something else.
What I'm saying is, just the grass cutting and the minor things that he's supposed to, should be doing. When you add all the things, he doesn't have enough hours in the week. He only has a certain amount of hours per week. Is that right?
Twenty-four, yeah.
And now you add Dockside to it. I don't think he has enough time to do just the lawn mowing, the hedges, the weed whacking. I mean, if you add all those hours up, I don't think he has much time to do anything else. I could be wrong, but...
That doesn't sound like it. That's a, that's a big field there, Dockside.
Pretty big, yeah. So if you take all your properties and put them together.
So somebody has to sit down with...
So I think you either need to have an additional labor, labor it all, maybe sub the whole, that aspect out.
So what I have from that is, does, does Bruce have the time to do everything that he's being asked to do?
Exactly.
Okay, got it. What else? I'm sorry, the right question. What else?
Well, I think that clarifying the condition of things, how things look, people, you know, people on the committee, people on commission feel like, you know, that's a priority for us to make sure that when people go to those parks, you know, they look as nice as do. I mean, we need to do better too. Bugsy and I, the committee did a walkthrough. I can give you another copy of the walkthrough I think I did earlier on, maybe last spring sometime. You know, what's been done. Sometimes, sometimes there's some big jobs that have to be done. You know, clearing out places that have been overgrown for a while. So, we can make, I can redo that list for you and submit it, you know, as far as priorities of things that...
If there are areas that you see, like, you know, as you say, overgrown and stuff like that, that you see that never get attention to, you know, we need, you need to get that information to Jeff, who will get it to us because...
Right, yeah. We did in that other, when we did that walkthrough, but I think it's time to revisit it again and see, you know, what should we get done? What can we, what can we line up so that when this job starts in the spring, there's enough time allocated and enough resources to make those places look... I mean, I feel bad when I go down to the Riverside, the Dock Riverside. You know, we have those planters, but we don't have anything planted on them, you know. And we have all those people coming in, and wouldn't it be nice if we had money, more money in the budget to make that look a little nicer?
Does the Phillips, I thought we flowered?
I thought we did have.
The, who's the flower group?
Yeah, the garden club, they, yeah, yeah. They do that. But then we have these big planters.
They don't do those? I mean, for a while, the plants were broken and we had to have them repaired or replaced or something.
Yeah.
So maybe, that may be something that goes on there is, because they're, I mean, I just always assumed the garden club does that kind of stuff.
Yeah, well, if they do, they have, there's nothing but in the planters since last spring.
Okay.
So, I mean, just that kind of stuff. I mean, we have a lot of people coming on the sea track and a lot of people down there, like the, the event we had this weekend. You know, it should look as nice as it can look so that, you know. I don't think we have to be picture perfect. I think it could just, you know, look a little more, you know, we just go ahead and...
Okay.
But how do you, do you have anything to say, Steve?
No.
No?
Just as long as, you know, what, what the work's money is, if it's coming out of our budget, we just wanted to make sure it's the right stuff, that's all. That was the big thing.
Yeah, that's, that's a question for, I guess, Michelle to see how she divises up his timesheet.
So each, each column in his timesheet identifies where the work was expended. Yeah, the question is, is there a, I think you specifically mentioned Dockside. Is there a Dockside's column? I'm pretty sure there's a Mayor's Park. And I'm pretty sure there's a Tott, McConville.
It's either McConville or Tott, that.
Do you want me to go get it? Can you get in there? I don't have enough to watch.
Well, I just thought, yeah, we just wanted to bring your attention so that maybe we can clear.
If it gets to the point where it's coming out of your budget, and the budget season is coming up, and you need to, you need to increase your budget.
Now's the time.
Right.
You know, to, when you negotiate budget with Michelle, those are the questions.
Rec currently doesn't have responsibility for Dockside.
You know what, rec?
No.
Doesn't have responsi, rec doesn't have responsibility for Dockside.
That's right, rec doesn't have responsibility for Dockside, do you guys?
Is that not correct?
Yes, as far as contracts and parties and stuff. So I guess that means that they don't have responsibility for cutting the grass either. I know you don't have the contract and the permit, all that kind of stuff that we talked about there at our last meeting.
I heard that go way over my head.
And you prefer to have it fly right over your head, yeah.
What we're talking about is whether or the recreation commission should be responsible for Dockside.
It takes a lot of hours, it's a lot of maintenance.
No, I mean, us as a commission should be responsible for Dockside as well as the other recreational areas that we currently...
Bring it on. What, you don't want to do it? The permits, the request for parties and stuff don't come through you, right? And that's something that I think we had talked about briefly. Eventually, you know, getting it over to you the way, same way you approved your other permits.
Yeah, yeah.
Come on, you guys are doing a really good job.
It makes sense.
We'll talk about that in our next meeting.
It makes sense. It's recreational property. Yeah. I haven't been out in there.
So...
We need a code update.
I have the following. Where does the Dockside mowing money come from? Who opens and closes and cleans the restrooms at Mayor's Park? Who reviews the seasonal worker's timesheet? Who reviews and approves? We really shouldn't have the hourly pay in the contract. Who is responsible for directing the efforts
Correct.
of the seasonal laborer? And does the single seasonal laborer that we have at the number of hours that the agreement is, is, that the agreement specifies, is that a sufficient number of hours
Correct.
to perform the work that is identified in the contract?
Correct.
So it's, those are the six items that I have.
I would think that's pretty, that's pretty much it, yeah.
And you're going to provide us with your, your overview of...
Yes.
Would you do that in the fall or in the spring?
We, I will update, this, this is my notes. This is, I gave it to you a while ago. So I can update our walkthrough. We took a walkthrough of all of the sites, kind of what needed to be done. We prioritized electricity. Our next priority is putting up those dividers in the bathroom and replacing the doors at the bathroom, but we'll go out to bid for those and have some, a company do that.
Which bathrooms is Mayor's Park, which bathroom?
The bathrooms at Mayor's Park. We have the dividers to go inside the bathrooms. They're already there. And we, but we need to have them installed. But we also need new doors at Mayor's Park, the pavilion. So now that we have the electrical work done, we're going to go out to bid for that, those things to be done, to put up the dividers and put up new doors. And hopefully have enough money left in this year's budget to take care of both, if not at least one of those.
So you're putting up dividers, are you making them two-person bathrooms, is that...
I think just to make them more private.
Oh, okay.
You open the door.
Yeah, okay.
You open the door.
So, I mean, the door locks pretty much, right? It should lock.
Right. I don't know, that would be, contacting the door company, having them come and look at what the panels are that we already have, you know. What would it cost to install and make sure those panels work? And also to replace the doors on both the men's and the women's room. And, you know, make sure...
You have the panels already.
We have some panels already, right, but they haven't been installed. So they need to be installed and accompany that.
So they'll still be one-person bathrooms?
Right.
So can I suggest that they be generic? Why, do we have to have a men's room and a ladies' room? Just make them restrooms?
I don't know, I don't know, I don't, you know, I, to be honest with...
At the end of Main Street here for a particular reason, so people don't get offended. And if you only have, you know, that's, it's just, it's just an idea of changing the signs.
Right, I'm not, well, I would have to look to see if those dividers that I'm talking about, I just panel dividers or dividers with doors. I would say if they're not dividers with doors...
Yeah, if there's going to be one person in there at a time, and you're going to lock the door, the main door, doesn't make a difference. Okay.
That's right. I would have to, you know, you know, that's, those are all kinds of questions. Once you, you know, to be honest with you, I've never used them. So it would need, it would need a more detailed evaluation before I would come and say, yes, the condition is prime for being re-signed, you know.
And one of the other issues was the planters at the Riverfront. And who gets in touch with the garden club? Is that something that we do through the office, Marie?
I don't really, I think you forgot about the...
I have a question for garden club.
If you could email me the garden club person, I wouldn't mind.
I know one person who's, or one or two people were on it, but I don't know if I have contact information for it, so let me ask Jeff.
I know that, I know that earlier, because nothing had been done just before the patriotic season began, that I did go down and plant some red, white, and blue things around the bandstand, and then they came and they took care of all of that. We did put some stuff in the planters, but it's nothing that would last the whole season to, you know, to be taken.
Yeah, I don't know, you know, what they do. I mean, they, I know they do the foot of Main Street, and I know they were looking at that when the wall broke to see when that would be fixed so they could replant in there.
The only other thing that's not on the agenda, I'm sorry, but we do have requests for use of the Mayor's Park and Pavilion for the two hops on the Hudson for next year. And I believe that Mr. Share would like to move forward so we could begin to, so I will have, I'll give Jeff that information to put on your next agenda. so I will have, I'll give Jeff that information to put on your next agenda.
What are the dates? Do you happen to know?
Yes, I do, September twenty, September nine, no, I may start with the first one, June twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty, and September nineteenth, two thousand twenty. And I do believe that means it's before Sea Streak, right? And the other, so.
I think Larry has some input on that too, so. I think Larry will have some input on that, based on traffic and parking and all the rest of the stuff that we.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and never having anything, three things at the same time.
Yeah, all that.
Yeah.
But before the, before the dockside came under our control or whatever, did the, did Highway mow that? It used to get mowed all the time.
Yeah, we always mowed it.
The state didn't come in, did they?
It used to be, Kenny Trumbull Senior used to do it for a long time, and so did Joe Russo.
Okay.
So, would that have been the rec department?
Yeah, they were, they used to do the cutting for the rec.
Joe Russo did a lot of stuff pro bono.
Yeah, he did.
Yeah.
Just wondering.
So, are you meeting again next week?
Yes.
So, I would give, I will let Jeff know that we need to put the consideration for these applications on next week's agenda.
Yeah, consideration of the application, I'm not sure how far we'll get by next.
Well, as you, as you know, of course, he would like an expedited, expediated.
Expedited.
Expedited, expedited. I would do, I did book fair for two days, saw it at the elementary school, I'm lucky I could talk. I think that's all, do you have anything for the Recreation Commission, do you have any?
I, I will just say that you guys have accomplished a lot more in a couple of years than I've seen in a long time. Doors and electricity and then things, things that I didn't even know needed to be done got done and then.
We'll tell you more things that need to be done, right, guys? Oh, the other thing, I'll tell you one thing that needs to be done. You have to find people who are willing to decorate the bandstand. The bandstand decoration has to move from the seventy-plus-year-old people on the committee and our family and friends to somewhere else to get the bandstand, so I don't know.
Can you get school kids, is there?
Get school kids to get on a, nineteen, fifteen-foot ladders and decorate the bandstand?
I was thinking around the, around, around the edges.
High schoolers.
High schoolers? I remember, this was, out of our whole group, there's only one person willing to go up that ladder, and he was seventy-seven, so. I'm just saying that as, it's a cha-, it's a challenge to get the bandstand decorated, so it's something we really need to.
Maybe advertise for it in some way, maybe advertise for help with that or.
I did. I had one of the committee members say, is it gonna BYOB for your coffee, or you're gonna, you're gonna provide coffee, you know? It's, it's just a challenge to get volunteers, you know.
Tell us.
So, I don't know if we have, do it, you know, I hate to, you know, say, but is that, is that, does that fall under our purview to decorate, you know?
Yeah, obviously not, if you're gonna get hurt, I mean, I know the rec committee has always done that.
Right, and you know what, you know, we're, we're putting people on those ladders and we're unemployed by the town, if something happened insurance-wise, that could be a challenge, I'm just, I'm not thinking of that as an excuse not to do it, but it sounds good.
Ruth, maybe what you want to do in your budget for next year is allocate money to hire someone to do that.
Yes.
I'm serious.
Just, you know, I mean, we like doing it, but it's a challenge. Would you say, Steve?
You can help them, you can direct the electrician.
Yeah, we, I'd be fine telling other people what to do.
It's not so much that it's a, it's an electrical job, it's just getting the lights up there.
You remember doing it because you were on the commission, so, yeah.
I think I did it once or twice when I was like, I just remember being.
That's why you decided to go from the recreation to, oh, Steve, because you weren't gonna sit and get the lights on.
How many people did you have working on that?
How many people did we have? Myself, Steve, my husband. And after a while, Mike Turton came down. And he was in charge of making sure nobody fell, he was helping. And then John Morandi, the other committee, he came later, he had to take his wife to the, so there was like that.
Or maybe we need to rethink, I mean, when you don't have people that can get up the ladder, then maybe we need to rethink whether or not we're gonna put lights all the way up. If people can't get up the ladder, then you don't put lights up there, you put them along the, the edges, you know.
Well, there's also the tree that has to be decorated, right?
Yeah, we still have to do the tree and the roping. It looks beautiful, you know, when you drive, you hit them in the seat, it looks good, I'm just saying, I didn't mean to bug you with it today, I'm just, it was fresh on my mind.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, guys.
Did they make it to the fire company to start on the injection on the floor before they down there, the last?
They did that the other day.
They finished it?
Yeah, they did it all Thursday.
Oh, really? I thought they were gonna do it one day.
How did it come out, Steve?
Some spots raised up, some spots didn't.
Is it better now or worse?
I guess it's better, you know, in some parts, but, you know, it didn't come up where, it locked itself, it didn't really come up in some parts, some parts a little higher in there.
Well, you can skim over it now, though.
Probably, yeah, you know.
But it's structurally still more sound.
They did it Thursday, they did it, took them all day, but they did it.
All right, cool.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all.
Thanks, guys.
I'll make this two seconds, I'd like to make a proposal that we eliminate paying for the municipal parking lot for our small business, holiday weekend Thanksgiving, so the parking lot will be free from nine PM on Wednesday, November twenty-seventh, until eight AM on Monday, December second, so everyone can come in and shop and then visit and enjoy the holidays.
Going to make a motion?
I would make a motion to approve what I just said. Approve the free parking over Thanksgiving holiday.
I second your, your, whatever you said.
The hours are from nine PM on Wednesday, the twenty-seventh, until eight AM on Monday, December second. Thanksgiving flows into December this year.
All in flavor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. And you're just gonna put a.
You have the signs, you put them on the meter, I'm gonna ask Jeff or somebody, because I'm gonna be on that Wednesday, I have them.
So, just put a.
They'll be ready, they'll be laminated, and they'll be duct taped.
Okay, great. Next is a discussion with the Chamber about Main Street decorating for Christmas.
I'm Eliza, President of Chamber Commerce. We have several Main Street merchants who are interested in decorating and making Main Street bright and cheerful this year. Greg Gagonis has volunteered to help cover the costs of buying extra additional lighting. And I've been speaking with Bugsy, who's interested in volunteering, we'd like to get a group of volunteers and ask the merchants to each take a tree on Main Street, and also Greg and Bugsy are interested in doing a full lighting down at the visitor's center around the subway tunnel and maybe put a tree down there as well, and on the bushes around the planting and at the bottom of the foot of Main Street. So, we're just asking permission and.
You've spoken with Jen.
We've spoken with Jen, that's right.
And she has described what shouldn't be done.
That's right, so we, we can't, you know, strangle the trees with the lights, they need to be taken down no later than, you know, February. And I would definitely sort of outline what our requirements are for volunteers and how to do it, so that that would be clear. And anybody who puts them up has to bring them back down by February.
And these would be solar powered?
Yes, so the ones on the trees would all be solar powered, where you put it in the ground and it lights the tree, and then you don't have to deal with outlets or anything like that. The lighting down at the visitors' booth and that area, we would like to hook up to the visitors' booth electricity. And was there another outlet?
There is another outlet in the panel at the entrance, the eastern entrance to the subway.
So, if we could hook up to that, that would help us a lot.
The concern would be the cabling, not the cabling, but the wires, the electrical wires would run from the subway to where?
That would go then around the subway entrance.
Okay, just around the subway entrance.
For that not.
To the visitor's center.
As you enter the subway, on the right-hand side, on the eastern subway entrance, there's a panel.
Yeah.
You can run the cord right up the wall, would never go near on the ground or anything, that will power the subway entrance. Visitor Center's bathroom, in the utility room, you have multiple outlets there. Again, you can run them right out and up, same thing we do when the rabbi comes and puts the menorah down there as well.
So, my, my question is, I understand on the subway, for the visitor's center restroom, the outlet is inside.
Correct.
How do you funnel it outside?
There's, when you close the door, there's enough with the molding.
Gotcha.
Well, for the winter, you know, the winter molding in there.
Okay.
You can just put it right in there and go right out, up over the door, nowhere's near anybody walking.
Okay, and that will get the rest, the visitor's center and the restaurants, okay.
And the bushes around.
Well, the bushes around implies that there's a wire that's gonna be run outside on the ground.
At the back of the visitor's center?
The back of the visitor's center is closed, you'd have to go out the door, but you can easily put that right down, and I can even run that right under the bluestone, the bluestone pops right up, and we could just lay it under that, so it's not a trip hazard at all. Excuse me?
That's where I'm concerned about.
Oh, yes, no, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, no, we can do that.
One other question we had was, Bugsy said that, that the village has a fair amount of extra lighting, like, you know, lights in storage that don't get used, because there's no way to put them up.
He's got the storage.
If we could borrow those for these purposes, that would be also helpful to our efforts.
We do have a surplus of red and white strands, which the former crew chief, Chris Hyatt, bought to make candy cane designs on the telephone poles. There is the old garland we used to string across Main Street. The best I would put that would be up on top of each building, but it would have to be secured firmly. That garland weighs probably a hundred pounds, each strand, so, I mean, that might be a little much. Like I had said before, he's willing to put money forward, we would buy.
What we needed.
What we needed, and then this way, we can either store it down at Mayor's Park, where we store our leaves and everything, and then each year, just get volunteers to put it out, and then this way you have everything you need.
That would be great.
Just, just one thing you, you mentioned when you first started, putting a tree down at the end by the bathrooms.
Yes, that was one of the ideas we had, was.
To me, that would take away from the tree that's in the bandstand, because when you're walking down Main Street, you can see the tree in the bandstand.
So, that's up for debate, I guess, but it was, Greg usually does a tree.
Well, I, I had been putting a tree up on the patio, and I said I can, I could put that there instead. I just always felt like that, that whole area could be better utilized during the seasons to, you know, light it up, for George driving down, they can see all, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I like the lighting all around the buildings and bushes and stuff, I'm just wondering if the tree there would take away from the tree in the bandstand.
I mean, would, would it be a crazy idea to say that, that the tree at that spot could be the village tree?
Does they do it down at the bandstand for the Santa Claus thing?
They have the Santa Claus running the hole, but, I mean, you could, what you could do there is maybe two small trees on the sides.
That would be a good idea, except for I was informed today that I have to install a bike rack.
Oh, you got the bike, the bike thing?
Yes, it's, I guess it's being delivered to me tomorrow.
Decorate that thing.
I understand, it is beautiful, really, it's stainless, it's stainless steel, wow, that's what I was told.
Yes, so I will now have two down there for absolutely nobody who puts bikes down there, because they don't use the one right behind the visitor's center's bathrooms.
Maybe if the children put it there, maybe they'll use it, or at least sell their friends, not the winter, but.
So, one of the concerns was that your crew is very busy, do you have the time with your, with your crew?
This is all my personal own time, this has nothing to do with the highway department.
Okay, okay, got it. Then we come back to the tree at the foot of Main Street versus the tree at the bandstand. I understand Fran's point, the tree at the bandstand is sort of iconic at Christmas time, that's where Santa arrives and the fire company delivers him down, and, and the Rec Commission serves cookies and hot chocolate, and it's, it's quite, quite a nice event. And I agree with Fran, when you're driving down Main Street, your eye is drawn to the bandstand tree.
And the bandstand itself.
And then the bandstand picks up with all the lights on.
Can we go with, oh, the, although, other decorations without the tree this year and see how we go, and then, you know, like a determination.
I think that's fine, I mean, Greg can still do it on his patio, which is always nice.
We appreciate it, Greg.
It's very nice.
Yes, thank you.
Yes. It might be something to bring up to the Rec Commission in your discussions with them, to see if they have any ideas about a second tree at the bottom of, of Main Street on the east side of the tracks, as well as the tree at the, at the bandstand. It seems to me if, if they're good with it.
Right.
Then, then we should be good with it.
Okay, so I would reach out to Lucan for that?
Lucan, yeah, and just circle back on this.
All right, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a pleasure, thank you.
Thank you for all the thoughts, Greg, thank you for your, Bugsy, thank you.
By the way, I like the candy canes.
What was that?
I liked the candy canes. We have one last topic on the agenda tonight, the solar power being sponsored by the CCA for anyone in the town of Phillips Town. As it turns out, electrical accounts qualify if, A, they use more than a thousand kilowatts of, a thousand kilowatts, kilowatt-hours per year, and two, they are not a demand meter account. So, looking at the village's electrical accounts, there are between nine and ten accounts, which are more than a thousand kilowatt-hours a year, and not demand meter accounts. So, I'd like to make a proposal that we enroll those accounts in the solar power offering from the town of Phillips Town.
Which ones are they?
Funny you should ask, just to put it on the list. The, the, the big users are not in the list.
Because they're on demand.
Because they're demand meter accounts. What is really interesting is that streetlights are not a demand meter account. And as it turns out, that is probably our largest account. Now, either I got bad information from Central Hudson, or I gave them the wrong account number, but we seem to be okay on that one. So, it's street lighting, the pavilion in the ball field, the Morris Avenue and, Morris Avenue, the Tot Lot, the Main Street Bandstand, the subway, the Campbell Avenue Market Street and West Street Pump Stations, and the Highway Garage. So, I will speak to, and this has to be, we have to be enrolled by November thirtieth to qualify. So, Michelle and I will work on that, I don't know what kind of, and what, what happens is you get credits that are applied to your account as opposed to a, a lower electric rate. So, I'm gonna give it a try. The downside on it is that you get two bills for each account, you get your Central Hudson bill, and then you get your solar power bill. Whereas with the current CCA in which we're enrolled, you get a single bill which has a Central Hudson charge and whoever the CCA company is.
Jewel?
Is it Jewel or is it somebody else? But Michelle, Michelle feels that, that if we can save some. Uh, but Michelle, Michelle feels that, that if we can save some money, it's worth it to do, to, to check.
Well, there's limited number of spots, I know that, so, so getting in there in time is gonna be important, and it's not a guarantee necessarily either.
Right, it is not a guarantee, yeah.
I would second your motion, Marie.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you all.
I have one other item.
Sorry, yes.
Um, my last item is, uh, our December meetings are scheduled for the first second, you said the first second and fourth Tuesday of the month, the fourth Tuesday of the month is Christmas Eve, so instead of meeting on.
Scrooge, you don't want us here on Christmas Eve?
No, I don't, I don't, unless you're gonna bring presents and drinks. Okay, so instead of meeting on December twenty-fourth, we will be meeting on December seventeenth, so our December's meetings will be the third, the tenth, and the seventeenth. No meeting on the twenty-fourth, no meeting on the thirty-first. Okay, do I know if I need a motion for that or not?
No, I, I think, it's just. Can you make sure that Michelle is aware so that it, it may affect her bill?
Yeah, well, that was quite a bit of discussion in the office today, so.
Public comment.
Yes, public comment.
What happened with the lime energy thing, or did I miss that?
Um, we have, we need clarification on that, and Bugsy is going to reach out to Dave to get it qualified. Um, when, last we spoke with one, we still have the opportunity to qualify, so.
Thank you.
We may be able to do that. Then I make a motion to adjourn?
A second?
Thank you, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, excellent.
Thank you so much, Marie.
Thank you. Thank you all.